Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, a few housekeeping, can we get the lights back? There we go. A few housekeeping items, this meeting is virtual, so if you are attending via the telephone, you will be able to-
You will be able-
Provide verbal comments.
Provide verbal comments.
Why am I getting feedback? Mandy, anybody know?
I don't know.
Okay.
Okay.
If you're on the phone, please mute your mics.
Mic.
Again, if you're on the phone, please mute your mics. We're listening to your conversation, please mute your mic. Got them? Okay. All right, I'll start over. So if you are attending via the phone, you will be able to provide verbal comments during the dedicated public forums, and I would ask that you would mute your microphones on your telephones until the time at which you would like to speak. And if you're viewing the meeting presentation online, you may experience a delay or lose some connectivity. If this occurs, a full meeting presentation can also be viewed at the City of Pella website. So as a, this is, most of you are aware, this is a special meeting. This is not one of our regular council meetings. The purpose of our special meeting tonight was to discuss the community center. That's why we're having this meeting tonight. Obviously, there's some other issues that people want to talk to the council about, and so I'm gonna change up the way we're gonna conduct this meeting. Typically, when we start a meeting, we have a public forum and ask people to comment on any agenda item. And then at the end of the meeting, we have a time for a public forum for anyone to comment on any other subject. So I'm gonna reverse those tonight. So the, if you're here to comment about anything other than the community center, we're gonna do that first, and I'd, so I would appreciate if you have issues other than the community center that you would comment at that time. And then we'll get into our agenda, and for those of you, community center-
No, I don't comment.
Prior to starting our discussion about that, we will have a public forum where you guys can comment. Everyone will have ample time to express their thoughts. Is that clear to everybody? All right. So I need a, a motion to approve the tentative agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Branderhorst, Calvin Banstra, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, oppose no, Mandy, please call a roll.
Branderhorst?
Yes.
Banstra?
Yes.
Skibout?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Score?
Yes.
All right, so at this time, if you would like to address the council with any issue other than the community center, now is the time to do that. If you wish to do that, I would ask that you would please come to the podium, please state your name, address, and try to limit your comments to three minutes, and we'll see how many comments are at that time now. Please mute your mic. If you're on the phone, please mute it. See if Mandy can, I don't want this interfering. Got it? Okay, all right.
All right. Good evening, my name is Jill DeBrees, and I live in Iroquois. I am a wife and a mom of four young kids. Before I get to the letter I'm going to read, I feel like I should say, I realize the community center is important, and while it's important, I feel like if we don't address this issue, if the pool individual wants to come to the community center and play basketball without a shirt on, we're kind of right back at the pool issue. So this is probably more important to go ahead and discuss. I'm going to read to you a letter that was sent to the city leaders. I didn't write it personally, but it expresses my concerns and opinions. Dear Mayor de Ward, I am contacting you regarding the situation at the Pella Aquatic Center. From my conversations with the involved persons and the June 26 article in the Iowa Standard, I understand that the Pella Aquatic Center is now allowing biological females to expose their breasts to public pool patrons and use the restroom facilities designated to males. I believe I stand with the vast majority of Pella citizens in shock, sadness, and outrage. This family-friendly facility is now a place where children are at risk of indecent exposure. Whether the perpetrator is a creepy old man on a playground or a teenage girl at the pool, it is equally criminal behavior, and the City of Pella should be treating it as such. As far as I'm concerned, the City of Pella is complicit in this abuse of children if it attempts to look the other way. Our youngest and most vulnerable citizens are at risk of being subjected to images that would be considered child pornography if viewed online. These images cannot be unseen, innocence can't be restored, the damage is permanent. It is absolutely unconscionable that the City of Pella is allowing its public supposedly child-safe spaces to be places where biological female minors can parade topless. All children deserve our protection, sometimes from themselves. I am also frustrated that the Pella Aquatic Center was a taxpayer-funded project. It was designed for children and families, it belongs to all of us who paid for it. Now my family is effectively prevented from using the pool because of the sexually inappropriate behavior of one patron that is being tolerated by the City of Pella. It is fair for parents to have to choose, it is not fair for parents to have to choose between the risk of exposing their young children to pornographic images or giving up the use of the aquatic center that their taxpayer dollars funded. We did not fund an adults-only, topless beach. We paid for a family-friendly pool with slides and a baby area for kids, parents, and everyone to enjoy in a respectful, safe way. This is literally a case of the emperor having no clothes on. Will Pella's leaders have the courage to speak the truth and end this evil foolishness? I urge and expect the City of Pella to take all steps necessary to give the taxpayers back the family-friendly aquatic center we were promised and to make it a safe place. Perhaps the simplest conclusion would just be a new policy that mandates rash guards for all patrons, male or female. Maybe the current policy just needs to more specifically detail which private body parts must be covered regardless of self-appointed gender. I am sure the risk of lawsuit weighs heavily on the city. I know that that's a concern, and I hope that changes like the previously suggested would be acceptable and accommodating to everyone. But I think as a culture, we sometimes forget that the ordinary moms and dads and children who make up the majority of America have rights too. I draw the line here. No, no, you may not show my son your breasts. You do not have the right for any reason. If this is an issue that eventually takes Pella into court, I for one say so be it. I can think of no better use of our resources than ensuring that our kids grow up in a safe and healthy community. It is a battle worth fighting. There are times when we have to choose to take a culturally unpopular, potentially costly stand. Perhaps Pella has been so uniquely blessed and positioned as we are for just exactly such a time as this. I pray for your wisdom and bravery in the days ahead.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Michelle Jones, mom of five kids, Pella resident, business owner. I want to second everything she said so eloquently, and I'm not gonna do as good of a job. So, not to repeat anything that she said, but to put a little bit of a spin on it, 'cause I spoke to Mr. Skibout on the phone a day or two ago, and kind of understood where you guys were coming from. I understood that, you know, the threat of a lawsuit, they've been advised by the legal counsel that that doesn't comply with Iowa policy and Iowa law, labeled as discriminatory or whatnot. So, a couple of thoughts on that. One is, it's not fair to pass the buck. That's not, when it comes to something like this, and nude live images in front of our children being allowed or to address the restroom issue, you know, if this policy stands the way that it is, a creepy old man, full man, with the wrong mindset, can, without any, you know, buddy questioning him, go into the girls locker room, fully nude, penis erect, pubic hair, in front of your four-year-old, in front of your ten-year-old. No questions asked because this pervert thinks he's a girl, or completely a girl. I understand that's not a transgender person, that's a pervert, but this policy allows that. So, it's a broken policy, and it needs to be fixed, and it lies here, it doesn't lie at the state. It lies here. Okay, that said, also- I think it is prudent to try to avoid a lawsuit. We don't need to try to bring, you know, take the transgender issue on head-on, but can we, can we make a policy that fixes the problem without offending people? The terms man and woman have been a little redefined for us lately, so let's not use those terms. Perhaps on the locker room door, we can have one labeled XX, which is a genetic profile that's, that's a female genetic profile. So label one door XX genetic profile, the other door XY genetic profile. And then also have a gender-neutral bathroom, sorry, have a gender-neutral bathroom in the middle, you know, for wherever, for somebody who doesn't want to go in either of those, that's fine. We're not trying to ostracize anybody, I just don't want my kids looking at someone with the opposite gender body parts. It's not hateful, it's loving. I don't want, if my child was one of those, I wouldn't want them exploited in the opposite gender, you know, locker room. So, I feel like there's a way to change the broken policy to make it work. All right, finally that said, just a, more of a meta, like zoom back. So, to each councilman, I want to ask you, what policy or law would the state pass that you would defy? You know, we didn't have to deal with these in Iowa because of Governor Reynolds, but if they required approval vaccine to come into your town, would you enforce it? If they required, you know, if they legalized stealing under the amount of $950, would you enforce it? If they mandated church to close because of a viral outbreak, would you enforce it? Or if they legalized, you know, down the road, they legalize minor attractive disorder individual, otherwise known as a pedophile, as legal, would you then not prosecute those who do those things? So, my question is, where is your line? And if it brings a lawsuit, again, what better use of our resources than to stand for what's right, to protect our children, protect the safety of the transgender individuals from themselves and from, you know, anything that could happen in the other locker room? So I guess those are probably my, my biggest things, and I, I would like to know, because you are elected officials, I would like to know, is this your line? Will you, will you risk a lawsuit to put in place a policy that, we put in as fair policies we can, but will you risk a lawsuit to put in a new policy in place to try to do that? And I'd like to, if possible, can you just answer yes or no as a councilman or woman?
I would like, I would like to ask you a question.
Yes.
You've referenced a policy several times. What policy are you referring to?
Well-
Because there has, there is no city policy, nor has there ever been a city policy about, about the transgender situation you're talking about.
Then what was the pool referencing when they said that their hands were tied, I guess? Was the question to you?
There's a state law, that was passed in 2007, I would encourage you to go read that state law. And one of the things that we do as elected officials when we take our oath of office, we pledge to uphold the laws of the United States and of the State of Iowa.
So that was my question, I guess, then what, what law would you defy?
What?
What law would you defy? Is this the law?
It is the law.
That you would go against? No, no, is this the law that you could go against to put a policy, hopefully- Or is it down the road for you, that line? But my line's here, I want to know where my elected official's line is, so that I know if I'm on the same page or not.
Well, just so you understand, the city council does not make laws.
Make policies, correct?
We have to abide by the law.
Okay, so you-
Okay, I got it.
And we have no choice.
All right, bye.
It doesn't matter, you don't have the power to defy the law.
Do you guys have any answers as far as, like, I'd be willing to risk a lawsuit for this, or?
I, I have a question.
Absolutely.
And maybe nobody here can answer, but what is the policy in the school district?
Like, is your home school, I'm not really sure what policies are in your neighborhood.
Almost every school district in Iowa is facing similar issues.
Yeah, I think that they have gender-neutral bathrooms, from what I've been told. They have male and female, and then they have gender-neutral bathrooms. And I don't know what their written policy is, but if you wanted to put, you know, don't make it male and female, then make it body parts. You know, like, if you have female breasts and a vagina, come in this door. If you have a penis, go in this door. That way, if someone's had surgery, it doesn't look like that, and they don't have those appendages anymore, then they can go in the other one, and you know what, no one else is gonna even know. And a creepy old man can't walk in and claim he's a girl.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Keith Hotsberg, word one. I didn't know so many people agreed with me. To follow up with what she said, what about the indecent exposure? We're dealing with minors here, and we're, you got, yeah, what about the indecent exposure law? Are we not gonna follow that one, or are we gonna follow the other one? Where do we draw a line? I am willing to draw a line, like the lady said, and my tax dollars would be well spent to stand up for this. There is not a lawsuit against the city right now, as we continue on as, as normal. The Supreme Court has not ruled on this. The district court has not ruled on this. I would take the notion that we should wait to be sued and do the right thing and then fight it.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
We have a local town across the river that was mobbed by their, against their flags. They stood up.
Yeah.
You know, they could have just caved too, they did. They stood up. I would like to see our town stand up. Now, this, this to me is not about gender, it's about indecent exposure.
Yes.
It's about, what if people start taking pictures?
Yes.
That's illegal. So we've got more illegal stuff going on.
Yeah.
And, did you, council members, did you guys consult with any of your constituents before you made a decision?
What decision are you referencing?
This matter is closed and shall be concluded as such, that decision.
Did you consult with any of us before closing it?
Did you consult with the general counsel?
We, our statement stands as we presented.
You did consult with general counsel?
Because that wasn't said in the statement.
No, I'm asking if you did, did you or didn't you?
I think it says that in the statement, yes.
Did you get a second opinion? Are we just taking one?
Yeah, the city was reviewed, the city has reviewed the matter with legal counsel, yes. So we, we have consulted with our legal counsel.
Did you get a second opinion?
No.
Okay. And like I said, the Supreme Court hasn't ruled on this.
No.
District court hasn't ruled on this. So why are we ruling on this?
Amen.
That, my basic thought was, you know, we are the people, and we were not, seems to me we have no input on this, because this decision was made before you called a meeting.
Yeah.
So, I would, I would ask you to reconsider after this meeting. I'm not saying you have to change anything, I just want you to reconsider. And, let's take a stand in this town. I'm willing to spend a lot of tax dollars to take a stand, and I'm sure there's a lot of people who wants to spend some tax dollars. So you have my permission to take a stand and go forward. Thank you.
Evelyn Nickel here in Pella. And, yeah, you said today on your Facebook, "City of Pella has received concerns related to the swimming attire of a patron who recently visited the Pella Aquatic Center. The city has reviewed the matter with legal counsel, and no further action will be taken. The city considers this matter concluded. The City of Pella operates the facilities consistent with state and federal law." Well, do you know that gender identity is not part of the federal code? Do you know that according to the policy of the state, indecent exposure is allowed to be considered and as part of what someone can do and say? And that to say that this is not something that we can do is a cop-out and a, and a way to just say, "Well, no, you know what, guess what, we're not gonna do that." So the whole idea of being complicit in this, why don't we just become a sanctuary city? Why don't we just say, "Hey, you know what, the bottom line is, guess what, point, zero point six percent, zero point six percent of Iowans are transgender." Not even a one percent. And you know what, I, if that's who they are and that's what they want to do, I have no problem with that. That's where they are. But, when, and they, when, when they talk about it, they say, "You know what, I just want to be who I really am. I just want to have the right to be who I really am." And yet, when they are given separate bathrooms, which was given as an option by the woman back there, "No, no, no, well, I want to go in the one that I feel best in." Okay, so why is less than one percent allowed to be given more?
Yes.
More majority, more power than the majority of 99% of Iowans who say, "You know what? No, you know what, that's your choice, you made that choice, most of us made our choice." Um, you know what, you talk to some people, they like to go to the beaches nude. Well, you know what, they can't do that in Iowa, can they?
No.
So, and you know what, um, I'll tell you when I, there are several times that, when I've been to sporting events and concerts, when, for 15 minutes, I want to identify as a man so I can go to the bathroom faster than 45 minutes. And I'll tell ya, I want to do that. So can I do that? Well, yeah, you know, according to the law and the policies, I can do that, for just that 15 minutes. No, that's not correct, that is not right, that is not what this is all about. This is about the fact that this is a family-friendly place. Read there, boy, when they're trying to sell me the tickets, it just sounds like utopia. It just sounds like, "You want to send your kids here, they want to be here." And you know what, you're right, they do. But I do not want my grandchildren, I do not want my neighbors, I do not want, and I, you know what, I'm sorry, this person, whatever this person is going through, they can go through that. But they don't have to go through that and push it and shove it down the throats.
All right, let's leave, keep, let's not talk about other people that aren't here.
I'm just saying that person, whoever that person is.
Let's keep our comments to the issue at hand, we're not even talking about other people.
Okay, the issue is, they don't have that right to force it down people who have paid for their admission into that place. So she's a middle-team biological female, and you can bet your bottom dollar, she didn't do that on her own.
Again, we don't need to discuss anyone else that's not here.
Okay, so-
Do you want to talk about the issue?
All right, the issue is-
And your three minutes are up, so please grab it up.
The Iowa Standard, oh, oh, I'm sorry, I have three minutes.
Yes, you do.
Oh, did you guys have three minutes? Thank you very much, Don.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm Melissa Brown. Today, I'm a city employee. Today, my two children are city employees. I don't usually speak, I'm gonna get emotional, but I ask God to shut my mouth or give me the words to say. Unfortunately, he did not shut my mouth. So, Pella was founded from religious dissenters.
Yes.
And it's called Pella because it's in God, our hope and refuge.
Yes.
And today, I'm looking for the Daniels on our city council, the ones who refuse to bow down to this. Who's gonna dare to be a Daniel?
Yeah.
Because whatever we tolerate today, we will be judged for one day.
Yes.
And I cannot guarantee that myself or my children, and there's some other parents of lifeguards here, and I know you're short-staffed, I work at the pool, that won't make them walk out tomorrow. But that's all I have to say.
My name is Michael Schover, I'm pastor of Christ to Redeemer Church, east side of town at the old Chandler building. Been here three years, and the first thing I was told when I was considering moving here was, "The great thing about Pella is, it's a great place to raise your kids." That's like the number one thing that people say, you put that on like the billboards. Great place to raise your kids. Is it? I would like to keep it that way. I don't know how we would interpret these laws here. Iowa Code 728.5, public indecent exposure in certain establishments, so this is concerning certain establishments. An owner, manager, or person who exercises direct control over a place of business required to obtain a sales tax permit shall be guilty of a serious misdemeanor under any of the following circumstances. And these are the ones that apply, I think. B, if such person allows or permits the exposure of the genitals or buttocks or female breasts of any person who acts as a waiter or waitress. So, our person that, under discussion here, I guess they are not a waiter or waitress, so maybe that doesn't apply to them. C, if such person allows or permits the exposure of the genitals or female breast nipple of any person who acts as an entertainer, whether or not the owner of the place of business in which the activity is performed employs or pays to compensation to such person to perform such activity. Well, then maybe that doesn't apply either. D, if such person allows or permits any person to remain in or upon the place of business who exposes to public view the person's genitals, pubic hair, or anus. Now, absent from that, of course, is the breast. So, perhaps there is a way, if you can snake around all of this, you could say, "Ah, none of this applies to our circumstance today." Maybe, maybe not. Iowa Code 709.9, indecent exposure, says, "A person who exposes the person's genitals or pubes to another "A person who exposes the person's genitals or pubes to another, not the person's spouse, or who commits a sex act in the presence of or view of a third person, commits a serious misdemeanor if, one, the person does so to arouse or satisfy the sexual desire of either party, and, two, the person knows or reasonably should know that the act is offensive to the viewer." Now again, you might say, "Well, that doesn't pertain to this situation. This person wasn't doing those specific things for the purpose of arousing another person." However, it was very offensive to the viewer, was it not?
Amen.
Pella City Code forty-six oh three, contributing to delinquency. And here's where I think it really hits home, guys. It is unlawful for any person to encourage any child under eighteen years of age to commit any act of delinquency.
Yes.
Are you encouraging young children under the age of eighteen
Yes.
to commit acts of delinquency by allowing them to expose their breasts in public? If it's, is it acceptable at the public pool? Then is it acceptable in the public square? Could this person, could, could, could all of these women walk around, put their tops off during tulip time? And say, "Hey, that's just fine. The neighbor across the street, he's a, he's a runner. He runs with his shirt off. He's a man, he's physically fit, no one says anything to him." Why? Because he doesn't have female breasts. But if a female were to run down the street, I'm certain the cops would be called. But not in, but not in the public pool? Is there some reason that around that gate, that no longer the law applies? Does, does, does the law not apply? I mean, I'm asking you now, what is the law? What is the public delinquency law? Or the, 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 the law for indecent exposure? Do you not care? Do you not care? I spoke with this gentleman here today. I wanted to get an answer from him. He gave me the runaround and read me the Facebook response. He, he just quoted to me five times in a row. He refused to give me an answer. Is this what we want Pella to be? No, it's not. You hear? It's not. And, mentioned already, but consider, because once you allow one thing to happen, it absolutely will fall on the other foot. If you allow a young female to defy all laws of biological science, logic, rationality, natural order, of everything that we know to be good, right, and true in the world, and we cover our eyes and say, "No longer is truth, truth anymore." If you do that, then you have just opened up the gate to men to do that. And the men can then go into the female locker room, and again, they can expose their genitals to our daughters. Is that what you want? Is that what you want for your granddaughters? Because that's what you're allowing, ultimately. And if not that, then consider further. My last point. The danger that this is putting this person in, and future people, what if this encourages other young people to get the wild-haired idea that they can go around and expose their breasts wherever they want? And who's to say that there might be some unsavory folk when they do that at some other place, who might have other bad intentions? Who then might take opportunity to violate such person? Because now they have opportunity, their breasts are being exposed, and who knows the way that crazy people think? They might do something about that, they might act upon that. So by allowing this to continue, I think you are contributing to, what does the law say? Contributing to? It is unlawful for any person to encourage any child under eighteen years of age to commit any act of delinquency. You're all guilty. You're all guilty.
Hi, my name is Kathy Koper, I live in Pella, I'm a mayor. But when God speaks to me, I listen. Tonight, I had to call my son that lives in Osseto, and I told him not to bring his kids to the Pella pool anymore. And he had heard what had happened, and he could not believe in Pella of all places that this would be the first town. This would happen. So, you know, I do pay my tax dollars, and if there's a problem that you don't want to be sued, is what I'm thinking, that we don't have the money. Well, maybe the money that you get from our tax dollars, instead of going for something new for the city that's pretty, I don't care if we have to give up tulips. If we have to fight for our town, now is the time. Either you're with God or you're not with God. There is no, ladies say to the XX, no. There is no compromise. God does not compromise. And the city works for us, the Pella people. So, if we're behind it, you should be behind it, and we'll stand with you. Because there will come a time, and that I'm not gonna say to my grandchildren that I didn't do something. I'm gonna, I have been standing up lately. I want to take back my country. We have got to do it, people, we have got to do us. We have got to do it, because at this point, our city leaders and our mayors, whatever we got, they're not doing it for us. Because this was announced, what, two hours before the meeting? Well, I think that's not very businesslike. I think there should be a few days, let the people know what's going on. Make it well-known, what's going on. I'm with you. If you guys are gonna fight, we are with you. Pay our money, our tax dollars. Who cares if we have certain stuff? Pella's a beautiful town, but at this point, I don't think Pella people are looking at Pella the same way as they used to. And that's all I have to say.
My name is Helena Hayes, and I want to thank somebody in this audience for telling me thirty minutes ago, well, at six, or at five-thirty, that this was occurring tonight, and invited me to come. So, thank you, Kim, for that. Because word does get around very quickly in this community. And there's power behind that. I am not from this county. I am a non-resident user that buys summer passes here and have taken swimming classes in this county. Because your swimming pool is second to none. Okay, you have a fabulous aquatic center. It is much better than the one in my county. And we choose to come here and spend our money in your community. And that will not occur for me, um, in this, with this issue now. I also know that there will just be far-reaching effects to this decision that I will be following very closely. I also want to avoid the previous speaker.
Hang up. Helen?
Please.
Thank you. I also want to agree with the previous speaker that I, before all of you, draw the line and the stand with this. Like her, I have not been committed to standing up for what I believe is always right. And I'm going to make that decision tonight, that I need to be more proactive in that. And I have a feeling we're going to be seeing a lot more of that. At the city council, you, I know that there are a lot of people here that are gonna agree with me, that this is probably the first time you've been here. This is quite frankly, the first time I have ever been to a city council meeting. And I'm forty-seven, and I have to admit, I'm kind of ashamed of this. That's pathetic. Politics happens on the local level. So even though you state that there's an Iowa law, like somebody else mentioned, this anti-abortion, uh, city, uh, what, what do you call it? Sanctuary cities. We have a right to do that. So as a community, we get to stand together, and despite the law, um, you guys can make the politics on your local level. And I think that's fair. Please don't hide behind that. Listen to your constituents here. Listen to us. This is our community. We live here, I don't even live in this county, but I love Pella. I come to Pella all the time. I shop here, I work here, I love the place. And so, um, support those that support this community. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you all for your input.
Hey, Mayor, um, I, they're still, their mics are resting.
Oh, okay. Okay. Any, any other topic, anyone want to address, other than the community center? Anybody else that was here have anything else? All right, then I want to entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda. Hopkins, four, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed, no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Rinderhorst?
Yes.
Benshaw?
Yes.
Motion passed. So now we are moving to the Pella Community Center discussion, so we'll open up for public input for that now.
Mr. Mayor, just out of my curiosity, not trying to be a wise guy, um, is there anyone here representing or affiliated with the ACLU monitoring the meeting?
I just want to say, well, if I may, I'm sorry. I want to thank Jill, Michelle, Keith, Evelyn, Melissa, Michael, and I believe it was Cathy, Catherine, and Helena. It takes a lot of courage to stand behind that mic. It takes a lot of guts. And I, and it also takes a lot of conviction on your part, and I'm, I'm really moved by that conviction. And I want you to know that a lot of us, and I, I can only speak to myself, we've spent a lot of sleepless nights over this. And God bless my husband, he has heard me go over this hour by hour by hour. And as lately as this morning, representatives keep out and myself sat and pondered solutions. We're not your adversaries on this. We're trying to find viable solutions that will hold, excuse the pun, will hold water and will be sustainable. And that doesn't happen overnight. It takes time, it takes posturing, and it takes the ability for us to develop policies that are concrete. We can't wave a magic wand. Believe me, if I would have, I would have done it the day that Keith reached out to me. I had no idea this happened, but my neighbor thought enough of me to send me a text one Sunday morning. I had no idea. And quite frankly, he could have knocked me over with a feather. But when I ran for office, it was because I wanted to make things happen in the community. And just like this, we all want to make something happen. Nobody's laughing about this. Nobody's unrolling a banner. But we have to do it in a sensible manner that will protect everyone and will hold up in a court of law, not just a court of public opinion.
Does that mean we will revisit it as a council, or is it still included as a state?
I think we're always gonna revisit this. I, I think that until we can lay our head on a pillow and say, "How do we prevent this?" We'll continue to revisit it. And we'll revisit it immediately, and we'll revisit it over cups of coffee with you. You don't even have to buy. This isn't, this isn't fun. It's horrible. It's horrible.
Then we should not say that it's closed.
Yes, correct.
As far as my interpretation, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that incident is closed, because the individual has gone home. They're gone. But this policy and this happening, we do want it. I can only speak for myself. I don't ever want this to happen again. Like, it's terrifying to me, you know? And, and Bruce and I have talked about some creative ways and some legislative ways, but until we can land on it, you're gonna have to be patient. We don't want your children to be exposed needlessly. That is the last thing we want.
And we appreciate that very much.
Of course.
So please don't say, "No further action will be taken." Tell us, "Hey, we want to work with you on this." To make Pella, the Pella we love.
Right. Well, and I, and if I'm interpreting it correctly, and if I'm not, you know me, I don't mind if people disagree with me. I believe we're speaking about that incident at hand. We can't go back and act like this didn't happen, because it did. It happened. But again, we're all appalled by it. We're saddened by it. You know, I feel like a, a lot of innocence was taken away from our community back then. And guess what? Mine included.
So the next incident, you will what?
I, that is gonna have to be something, again, that we work out with legal counsel. Sadly, that's the way of our world.
All, all law and all policy, right, is discriminatory. That's the nature of it. You have to discriminate and determine what is right and what is wrong. And if you don't have an actual standard of righteousness by which you can judge, then you're just willy-nilly, and, 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 and then you have no moral ground to stand on anything. So that way, whoever then says, "Well, I'm gonna sue you," they're the ones who are gonna get the vote and they're gonna win. Right? That's how, that's how politics is run in America. The person who screams the loudest, who, who gets the, who gets the ADL or the ACLU involved, they're the ones who win. It's not, it's not, it's not based upon what's morally right. And, and that's what we're trying to say here. We want you to do what's morally right. You're talking about what's gonna win in court. Do what's right! Do what's right! What does God say? What is right?
I think that there is foundational issues here of our society. And they have clearly been placed before this body to have to deal with. And it's not an easy thing to do.
Nobody says this.
Then, I would beg for some time, because this has weighed heavy on our hearts.
Good. Good. I just wanted to encourage you, I'll print your second half, I'm sorry.
And I, I understand, I understand that politics, all you have to do is witness what has happened in Des Moines City Council. Anybody see that? It's who makes the most noise. Do you agree with that? No, I don't. But nonetheless, it does not change the fact that this has weighed heavy on my, on our hearts. But we can't just snap a finger and legislate morality. It doesn't work that way.
But, but it does, actually. That's exactly how it is.
And our question is, what, what will happen now?
No, there's a foundational, there's a foundational issue, and it doesn't happen overnight. That's all I want to say.
It doesn't happen tomorrow. All law is legislate morality. That's all I'm saying.
And what are we gonna do if there's a, if somebody decides to let the drag queen talk in the library next week? How do we deal with it?
Oh, my God.
Just stay, just stay to the pool. We're just gonna stay until we can figure it out. Everybody's gonna wear a top. Yeah. They don't think that. How hard is that? Do that tomorrow.
That's not discrimination.
And Jill, that, that is something that, that, um, that Bruce and I, and I've even discussed with Mike, and I called it a swimsuit. Maybe that's the solution. I mean, you know?
At least for short-term.
Yeah, you can get into the restaurant without something, maybe they can get into that.
But then, you, you would have to come up with a garment that didn't impede someone to the point, I was a lifeguard for years. You, you cannot put a garment on somebody that would impede their ability to swim. So it isn't, if I hear a hundred, one hundred percent cotton BBT, you know, you've got to, it is, it's gotta be soft.
You're already on the way to solving it.
All right, hey, in the interest, in the interest of Patty standing up for Patty, we, we had closed the discussion.
Sorry.
We're moving on to the, to the community center.
I'd also, God laid a message on my heart, which means we need to extend each other a great deal of grace, and I extend it to everyone involved in this. This is a tough thing, I understand. Now we need to move on to taking a deep breath in Pella communities. If we may. Thank you so much. I'd like to quote a former mayor. I'd like to quote a former mayor, Mayor Jim Mueller. As city leaders, we are always looking for ways to revitalize or repurpose the assets we already own. Don Duward, our current mayor, said, "We can't underestimate the importance of arts and culture, cultural opportunities made possible in our community center. These programs expand our horizons and support a high quality of life for Pella residents." Hello, I'm Patty Manzani. I'm board president of the Friends of the Pella Community Center. I'm speaking today in favor of option two for revitalization and renovation of the Pella Community Center. The most important asset of the community center is location, 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 providing an arts, cultural, educational opportunities at the heart of Pella. With an easy walking distance of the Oskaloosa Street revitalization, the Main Street townhouses, multiple churches, City Hall, the library, restaurants, entertainment venues, shopping, historic tourist locations, schools, college, senior living, and various year-round cultural activities and festivals unique to Pella. In a hundred-year-old historic building, a treasure from Pella's past and with bold leadership and foresight and creative vision, will be a major resource for Pella's future. A vital component for attracting and retaining workers, maintaining a vibrant community, and strengthening Pella socially, educationally, and economically in prosperous as well as challenging times going forward. Arts and culture is an essential tool in both economic prosperity and maintaining connections in our community as well as surrounding areas, while nurturing and adding to creative innovation for Pella. The citizens of Pella in 1913 had the progressive foresight and vision to make Pella a modern city for the 20th century. The Pella High School building was a linchpin for training and nurturing leaders and citizens of Pella for the 20th century. And we are assured that the current leaders of Pella will have the foresight and the vision to take Pella into the 21st century by building on the legacy that was left us with this incredible building, adding to it and improving upon that foundation and launching Pella into a new century and millennium. You cannot have a flourishing tree without deep, healthy, and sturdy roots. The Pella School Building was built to last in 1915, and it has, and can be used to build a lasting legacy for the next hundred years. With a public and private partnership, this historic building can be renovated and rehabilitated with expanding program space, certified kitchen, arts program growth, toddler room, senior center, diversified, non-traditional heritage recreational space, high-speed conference rooms, city office space, and all-purpose event space, expanded restrooms, modern HVAC, and full accessibility to all areas in a 52,000-square-foot facility at a maximum public cost of $11 million and a minimum private donations of $4 million. The Friends have done their due diligence, easily raised funds to hire an architectural firm who specialized in renovating while modernizing historic buildings, Schimmer and Associates, and to assure that renovations and additions are done, keeping in mind the needs of the future while respecting the past, as well as a feasibility study through Renaissance Group, who obtained potential lead gift funding of $2 million from 31 Pella citizens and assurances of donations from 10 others for the private funding of this renovation and rehabilitation. The Friends have also received unsolicited donations of $22,000 from a local family foundation and individual to be used in a capital campaign. I will leave you with a quote from John Ruskin, and I'll try not to give it to you. "When we build, let us think that we build forever. Let it not be for present delight nor for present use alone. Let it be such work as our descendants will thank us for. And let us think, as we lay stone on stone, that a time will come when those stones will be held sacred because our hands have touched them. And when men say, as they look upon the labor and wrought substance of them..." See, this is our forefathers' difference. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Porchi. I live at 614 Monroe Street. I'm also a board member for the Friends of the Pella Community Center. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about Pella's heritage and how it relates to the community center. And Pella's reputation seems to have taken a little bit of a hit recently. But I just want to talk a little bit about how we got to be known as a great place to live. And I think we can all agree that Pella is a great place to live, and that's why we're so passionate about it. That's why we care about it. But what makes Pella so desirable? Why do people choose to put down roots in our community? Common responses are that Pella is a neat and clean place to live. It's a safe place to live. It's a devout community. It has an enviable school system and ample jobs. These values combine to make Pella an attractive place to live and to raise a family. These values didn't happen by accident. They're traceable directly back to our community's founders. In 1855, in the very first edition of the very first newspaper ever published in Pella, Henry Peter Sculte wrote, "We hope that the renowned industry, order, honesty, and piety of the Holland character will show for ages their marks in the increasing neatness of town and country, in the goodness of the roads and highways, in the most scientific cultivation of the soil, in the increase of schools and other institutions of learning, and in the multiplication of houses of religious worship." That renowned Holland character, as Sculte calls it, defines our founders' cultural values, and today we call it Pella's heritage. That heritage defines who we are as a community. Without our heritage, what is there to distinguish us from other communities? Without that, we're just another West Des Moines or Ankeny or Valtuna. The good news is that we can help promote and maintain Pella's heritage, which is rooted in that renowned Holland character, through the preservation and updating of our community center. The history behind this building is fantastic. No sooner had the city installed modern infrastructure, think indoor plumbing and a municipal power plant, than plans were made to construct Pella's first high school building. With that firm foundation in place, a well-planned building can last almost indefinitely. Our forefathers also understood that a school, and thus its building, is not just for the students. It benefits every person in the community. When the building was dedicated, the Pella Chronicle proclaimed, "We have a right to be proud that we live in Pella today." And now, six generations later, the building is not only still standing, but it is in daily use. It's still providing essential services to the community. This building has fulfilled our forefathers' hopes for our community. It is a perfect monument to Pella's heritage. And I was just, as I was driving over here tonight, I was just thinking about, it was the intersection, really, of the city of Pella putting in the foundation and the foresight of its citizens that produced this high school and now community center. And here we are over a century later, and we're hoping that the foresight of the citizens will combine with the city's foundation again to propel this building further into the future. So, that's what I think.
Is on. Barely hear people who are speaking up here, so I'm going to focus. Okay. Better? My name is Robin Martin, and I'm a member of the Friends of the Pella Community Center Board, and for many, many years was the chair of the original Community Center Board. I'm speaking in support of option two tonight. It's hard to believe that nearly 45 years have passed since city leaders of that time embraced the idea of repurposing Pella's high school as a community center. That strategic decision was in keeping with the school's larger purpose that Bruce has so eloquently described, to serve as a cornerstone for public good. The programs and services housed in this built-to-last facility is now a key component in Pella's success. The original Community Center Board took on the task of making concrete some quality of life, private quality of life values. I'm sorry, that's my phone.
No, that was mine.
Oh. You need a laptop. We remodeled spaces for activities and amenities not otherwise available at that time. A public-private partnership expanded access to funds then, and it remains a financially prudent approach to raising capital to update the center now. The Friends of the Community Center, which is just a new organization, has already raised about $50,000 to fund the two major studies that Patty mentioned, a schematic design and cost estimates from Schimmer Associates, and a second fundraising feasibility study by the Renaissance Group. We are confident that we have the capacity to raise a minimum of $4 million in cash and pledges, and perhaps stretching it to $5 million. If a bond referendum is chosen by the city for its funding portion, we want to work with the coalition of local groups and the city to make that happen. The success of the community center is due to many factors. Its central location, the variety of spaces and services that we have in one place, management by the city, its neutrality as a space that is a publicly owned facility without ties or commitments to political or private or faith-based organizations, its cultural and recreational program, its unique gym, its dining room, its performing arts auditorium, all available for short and long-term rentals to the public. Two features of the center are particularly heavily used. They are the social services of Crossroads, an initiative, by the way, of the Kuiper family who wanted to help those in need, and the gym. Crossroads has been in the center for 38 years now and is a major resource providing essential social services that were not available before the center. This nonprofit and professional organization serves children, youth, and adults who otherwise might not be able to get the help they need. In the 12 months from August 2019 to August 2020, staff touched some 23,000 lives. Its popular annual event, the Clompton Classic, brought 1,942 people of all ages together to celebrate, exercise, and build community. Why is it so successful? Location in the heart of Pella, services in a public neutral site, pre-licensed counseling by professionals, English language learning classes, Medicare and Medicaid assistance through SHIP, toys for tots, a host of local volunteers, strong leadership, and so much more. Let's keep this essential service available to all who need it in our community without regard to income or status and located in the heart of town. We have a vintage gym. Few landmarks stir as much local sentiment as historic gyms. They serve as symbols of local identity and focus of hometown pride and the backdrop for generations of memories. That's from an Indiana State Historic quote, and I thought, that's what we've got. We have such a gym in our community center, and in the last full year of use, before COVID and other interruptions, over 8,500 people used it. From toddlers with stay-at-home parents, moms of Pella and their homeschoolers to retirees, to local folks dropping in after work to shoot baskets and came for organized events or simply to play. The community center gym does not compete, it cannot compete, with more spacious sports facilities and with different amenities. Instead, it offers a human-sized, authentic, and intimate place that capitalizes on the cool factor, that vintage gyms have. In group fundraising sessions that the Friends held, we heard story after story of happy times spent in that gym with schoolmates, of rooting from the bleachers for grandchildren and volleyball games, of pickleball quartets, and three-person basketball contests. Families are anxious for the gym to be repaired and opened again. An overwhelming number of women spoke out about the value they place on informal recreation activities and childcare opportunities in that gym. Option two finally makes the gym fully accessible, safer, open to natural light, and ready for play again. It has proven to be a flexible and sustainable space, building community. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Rhonda Komod, and I live at 510 Broadway Street. I'm also a board of the Friends of the Pella Community Center. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, thank you for calling this meeting tonight so that we can discuss this issue. No, and you're investing in a significant purchase. Most of us want to know, how do I get the most bang for my buck? Well, arts programming provides tangible financial benefits in Iowa and in rural communities specifically. The arts added $4 to $5 billion to the economy of Iowa in 2015. Local arts organizations draw non-local audiences at a higher rate than urban art organizations. Meaning, we get people to come here, go to the bakery, have a meal, go out after the play, buy tickets to the play to support other nonprofits, and maybe stay overnight and shop the next day. The number of innovative and design-integrated businesses increases in an art-rich community. Arts and people bring new and creative talents. Rural communities with arts organizations experience population growth three times greater than rural communities who do not have an arts organization. Two out of three rural businesses report that arts and entertainment are important for attracting and retaining workers. Historic preservation and reclamation of abandoned spaces for the creative sector improves quality of life. Residents in rural communities with thriving arts programs earn higher incomes, up to $6,000 higher than communities without arts programs. I believe we are an art-rich community. We also have a stately home for our numerous programs. It has received, initially it received new windows and an elevator, and later a renovated auditorium by the Kuiper family. And the Golden Agers received a large grant to redo the kitchen facilities and create a dining area. However, because of some years of deferred maintenance, this home is in need of repairs. And these repairs can be funded by a three-pronged approach. First, we have private funding. As has been mentioned, the Friends of the Pella Community Center, per the request of the former mayor, completed a feasibility study which identified $2,365,500 in potential lead gifts from 21 people, and 10 people who were willing to contribute but did not give a specific dollar amount. It was thought that the Friends of the Pella Community Center could raise $4 million for the rehabilitation of the current community center. Next, we could use grant funding. Should the city make the final step needed to be a certified local government, grants would be available for the rehabilitation of the community center. Tax credits could also be used for this project. And we are also exploring the possibility of using TIF money to help with this project. And the final prong would be public funding, hoping that the city of Pella would provide money for this project as well. The old Carnegie Library was rehabbed to become City Hall, and we believe rehabbing the community center is another exciting project. We believe that this project is in compliance with our comprehensive plan as it builds upon what we have to create a cohesive community design that reflects the history of our community. Architects who've worked to rehab historic buildings are full of creative ideas to adapt historic buildings to accommodate new uses. The Friends of the Pella Community Center has already raised money to hire the Schimmer Group, who designed a plan for rehabilitation of the community center, the Renaissance Group, who helped to guide us through a feasibility study to determine the amount of money we could raise, and Brand Appeal, who designed a... and Brand Appeal, who designed a professional pamphlet to be used in our fundraising campaign. We also received $22,000 in unsolicited money to start a capital campaign. We are pleased by the support of the community, but I believe when one receives such a large, unsolicited donation, it reaffirms that the citizens of Pella not only feel this project is important but are willing to help make sure that the dream becomes a reality. That said, the building plan is not set in stone. If council or staff had things they would like to see in the plan, it would be wonderful for us to work together. Historic buildings were built to last. The fact that this building has received minimal magnates and is still standing and usable is proof of the quality of construction. Historic buildings were built by craftsmen who used their skills to create unique, beautiful buildings. I respectfully ask you to keep this building and utilize it to its fullest potential. I believe this is the most responsible, respectful action that we can take for future generations. Thank you again for your time.
We'll see if it's hired up for me. Give it up. Well, we'll just work with it. Hello, my name's Arvin Benzani. I'm also a member of the Friends of the Community Center. And I want to assure the council I will not be removing my shirt during this presentation. Yes, thank you. That was my wife adding that two cents. You've seen our proposal, you've seen our feasibility study, so I'm not going to go through those details. Those of you that haven't seen those, I will point you out to the public library. There is a display in the lobby there that shows some of these plans we've been talking about with the Friends proposal. Today, I'd like to focus on one of the differences between the options you'll be considering. I think it's a core difference between the SEH proposal and the Friends proposal. The SEH proposal is similar to an earlier proposal developed by Shive Hederly and presented to the council in 2013, which would be eight years ago. That proposal also came in around $4 million and recommended most of the changes that SEH has identified. Both basically keep the building running as it is, and both miss the opportunity to reimagine the building so that it can serve the community now and in the future better than it does today. Notably, since the 2013 proposal, the gym has been closed because of ceiling issues. There's no hot water in the men's restroom because the pipes have failed, and there have been numerous repairs to the roof and the HVAC systems. It's time to act. The Friends proposal is more expansive and suggests several possible enhancements, most of which have already been mentioned. So I'm going to focus on an element that is at the core of the Friends proposal and from which most of the other possibilities flow. That's a handicap entrance in the elevator. You'll be surprised by that, but let me go into detail. The current handicap entrance is at the southeast corner of the building and was added in the '70s when the building was converted into a community center. It's showing its age. The ramp leading up to the entrance is too steep for wheelchairs, and access to the entrance requires crossing or walking up the alley from Union Street. The elevator is small and cramped and probably could not accommodate a gurney in the event of a medical emergency. And the elevator does not provide any access to the gym. The SEH proposal creates a new ramp sidewalk from Union Street and upgrading the elevator motor and controls. As for the gym, they propose adding a separate lift to lower wheelchairs to the gym floor. While this is more accessible, it is not user-friendly. Imagine someone in a wheelchair who wants to use the gym. Now, people who are coming into the gym after hours come in through the northwest corner. There's a separate entrance there. This is in the southeast corner, so these folks will have to go completely to the other side of the building to get in. Hopefully, doors unlocked. Then, dependent upon where the lift is located, perhaps they'll have to wind their way through the art center. Again, hopefully, those doors are unlocked. Then they can use the lift to get down to the gym. If they need to use the restroom, they go back up the lift, perhaps wind their way back through the art center, then take the main elevator to the second floor so they can reach those restrooms, and if they happen to be female, go all the way down the hall to get to their restroom. Again, accessible, but not user-friendly. This was one of the core problems that we challenged Schemmer Associates to solve. The elevator problem is that it's attached in addition to the building, so it's not attached to the original building. Schemmer's proposal was to move the elevator to the west side of the building where it can connect directly to all four floors, from the gym to Crossroads. Direct access. That allows us to give entry into the building for everyone, regardless of whether they're handicapped or not. It's the same entrance. Because once you put the elevator there, then you put the main entrance there as well. You consolidate five current entry points into one main entrance, and you move the community services office to that location where they can meet, direct, and monitor traffic coming in and out of the community center. For someone in a wheelchair, it's as simple as coming in the main door, just like anyone would. Going down the elevator, which, by the way, is larger and will accommodate a gurney, going down the elevator, directly onto the gym floor. And if they need to use the restroom, just like anyone else, they go across the hall to the new locker rooms. They're treated the same as everyone, and they have their dignity. That's user-friendly. In the end, this idea of moving the elevator to the west side of the building is the core of the Friends proposal. From that, everything else flows: the change in the layout of the building, the simplifying and cleaning that area, and all of the new features that that addition would provide. But at the core, it's to provide accessibility to the building to make it user-friendly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jim Hibma. I'm the director of Crossroads at Pella, and I'm also a member of the Friends of the Community Center. I would like the council to consider separating the Community Center project from any future project under the community value that we all have, and that is that we maintain what we have. I would submit that the reason for tourism and the attractiveness of Pella for many who come to visit the city is the city parks, the downtown, the individual homes that are all well-maintained. I've worked for over 30 years on my house at 402 Liberty that was built to last in 1895. And the dang thing now is that I have to practically start over. But it's worth it. I've had a lot of comments over the years of people who've encouraged me to keep working on that house. One story: For many years, I was the person who coordinated the announcers for the Tulip Time Parade. And I would stand in costume by the fence at the windmill in Central Park. And people would come up to me and ask me questions about Pella or say that they were impressed with how well the city was maintained. One guy made a comment that surprised him, which was that he didn't see any cigarette butts on the ground. And I said, "Well, our city crews worked long, 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 long into the night to make our city clean." Now, I was exaggerating a bit, but the city workers do a great job. So 100 years ago, when the Community Center was built, they built it with a future in mind, and the task of the next generation of people was to maintain the building. And I would imagine that that generation that built the building would be tickled about how it's used now and repurposed. But that building was built to last, and it seems like our civic obligation is to maintain the building. In 100 years from now, when the city of Pella might have a different focus, we fully expect that the canal area and the buildings around that area will be maintained. A city builds a project for historical reference to themselves and the lives in which they lived at that particular time. So rather than having a bond issue, I would encourage the council to spend the money that the building needs to be maintained for the next 100 years. Create a budget. Find a budget in general revenues or reserves. Pledge the money over a five-year period. I believe that the people of Pella, since they share and embrace the value of taking care of things, would accept the cost of maintaining that building. The Friends of the Community Center have identified initial donors to give additional repurposing. But my experience in watching Pella politics and the Pella community life, which is something other communities simply don't have, is that when we identify a project, we get behind it and get it done. So I would encourage the council to act more quickly on this project and get it started. Thank you.
My name is Denise Gregory, and I am the current president of Union Street Players Theater Group. I would like to thank the council for alerting us that you're discussing this issue this evening, and I know that your job is not an easy one, to allocate funds and decide how to best spend our dollars of our community for the best projects to serve the most citizens, and I appreciate that very much. I also appreciate the work that the Friends of the Community Center has done in working with the architects and the designers to come up with a design that I think is very feasible and beautiful. But I'd like to take a moment to speak about a little bit more of a personal aspect. The Community Center means a lot to a lot of people. That building has been around for many of today's adults' childhood times, and there are many stories that they have shared with us. This topic is so important that we took a night off from the rehearsals for our current Mamma Mia! play, and we brought the entire cast with us this evening. So I'd like for you to just look around at the people who came with us and notice their t-shirts, because each t-shirt depicts a different show that we have put on the stage at the Community Center. I'd also like to say thank God for Joan Kuiper Farber, who had the vision to change an old schoolhouse into a building that could be accessed and used by the members of our community for future generations for many years to come. I don't want to squander what she's done, nor do I want to squander a very valuable resource that we have at our disposal right now. And I would urge the council to look at the value of this building and look at the condition of the bones of the building. It's a good, solid building, and it needs some attention, and it needs it now. And for our theater group, it's very improved. But it's also important to the citizens of our community for their future. I would like to share just a few people that have benefited from being members of Union Street Players and being on our stage and taking part in some of the shows that have been on. We have Andrew Sen, who is now a costume designer and wardrobeer off-Broadway. Irene Erkenbach-Green runs a theater in North Stage, Vermont, and is also an actress. Megan McCombs-Mabye performs in Brenton, Missouri with the Bald Norbers. Tony Chim modeled and was in a soap opera in New York. Erin Hatch acts, sings, and dances on Broadway. John Van Wyk has acted on Broadway. Mindy Miller-Ferrara has acted in off-Broadway shows and is now a dance instructor. Nicole Vandezany has performed on and off-Broadway. Ryan Rumory has played drums all over the country for many productions and has designed sound and lights all over as well. Lonnie Appleby stars in commercials and is currently doing a film. Ann Wilkinson was an actress, and while in Pella, directed plays for USP and also for her own production company. Chandler Clark, Lynn Cooper, and myself have written and recorded our own music. Katie Collins and Colby Jones are currently pursuing active careers, and I'm sure there are many more. Please, please don't let this valuable resource go to waste. Thank you.
I think, can Eunice, I think, are you coming to speak, Eunice?
I'd like to.
Oh, yeah. Would you prefer to sit down?
No, I prefer to stand.
Okay.
I think perhaps I can make myself understood, because I'm a storyteller. And I have a story to tell you about the saving of the Community Center. And this started probably in the mid-'70s. There was a gentleman who came to Pella, and he had been asked to take down what's now the Community Center, the old high school, because he had also taken down the Second Reformed Church, the old one which was standing just next door. Well, it was very interesting, because of all people he came to talk to was Stu Kuiper. "Okay," he said to Stu, "you know, I've been asked, please, to tear down the old high school." And so Stu said, "Oh, really?" "Yeah," he said, "but you know what? I don't want to tear down that building. That building is built like a rock. It's just as solid as you can possibly imagine." And so Stu listened, and he listened, and he said, "Well, I think maybe we can do something about that." And of course, the rest is history. And I'm so glad you mentioned Joan, too, because between the two of them, they were the ones that put their heart and soul into that building. And then I also think about other people who do. I think about all the couples in Pella, people who are older than I. But anyway, I think about Mar Harima and Elvamay. There was a couple that were joined in high school. I think about Elmer Dutch Vermeer and Jeanette Langema. I think about all these wonderful couples that were alive and kicking and the heart of the company when I first moved to Pella in 1959. And I remember them with just such joy, because they were wonderful people. And they were the heart of this community, and they all graduated from Pella Community High School. Okay, back to my story. Stu Kuiper was a very, very great thinker, and he had plans, and he knew how to carry things out, and his management skills were fabulous. So he went to work, and he formed a committee. And that committee got excited, and they moved ahead, and they made a community center out of the old high school. Well, to end the story, Stu said to me one time, "Yeah, I know that guy who came and told me that building was too wonderful and solid to tear down." He said, "And his name was Wrecker Hall."
Hello, council members, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Nagini. My name is Isaac Pierce. I live in Pella. I recently graduated from Pella Community High School, and so I'm coming to you from a new perspective on the Community Center. I feel like a lot of times, when we think of the people that use the Community Center, we think of the older generation. Myself, being of the younger generation, I have been greatly affected by. I remember as a young kid going and using the gym with my siblings, getting off the mats and building forts and playing basketball in the gym and learning that forts was not my thing. But specifically what has meant a lot to me has been Union Street Players. I grew up with it, and it made me grow up. I went from the stage to assist in directing in the direction crew to directing my own show, and it has made me learn that I love to lead and has taught me leadership, and has made me... it's made me mature in many ways, and it's made me grow a lot of relationships, and it's caused me to gain a second family. The reason I tell you this is because the building of the Community Center is perfect for the way USP operates. We have access to all sides of the auditorium, which, when you're coming to see a show, you'll see we utilize. It's awesome to see people coming from the sides, and you feel like you're part of it. We have a more than adequate stage, backstage area, production crew, and all the stuff we have with lights and sound. We have a more than adequate seating area, and we have access to our green room and meeting room right next to it. Places like the Opera House do not have this. I know it has been mentioned that we could just move the Opera House. The Opera House does not have an adequate stage. In fact, it would not even be able to hold a small set, let alone full production. We do not have access to all sides, let alone an adequate space to put anything for green room, meeting room purposes, and does not hold enough people for an average USP show. The new building, which I am told has three gyms, is not going to be adequate for a show the size of USP. We cannot put a stage or a set on a movable stage, and it tailors more towards people in athletics than it does arts. And I understand that athletics are a very important part of this community. As much as it is not part of me, I understand people love it, and that's awesome. But I'm asking that we start to tailor it a little bit towards arts as well. So I love the rich history of the Community Center. I fear that even without it, whether we have a new building or not, USP will no longer survive if we don't have a Community Center. This new building does not allow for us to continue, and if we don't renovate the Community Center, that will be the outcome. It'll lose a part of my life, other people's life, and a rich part of Pella. Can I tell you how many times I get people who come up to me, even when I'm not doing USP show, and tell me how amazing they think the Union Street Players productions are? And I love every time, even when I'm not in a show, to come and see it, and to come and see my second family, which is a decent part of this room right now. So I'm not going to tell you how to do your job, because it's not my place, and I understand your job is very, very hard. But I just beg you to reconsider the plans. I don't know what the money is like, I don't know any of that. But I ask that you either work with us to change the plans, to figure out a way for USP to continue, or to renovate the rich history this building has, which is already allowing USP to continue. Because it's blessed me quite a lot, it's blessed a lot of people my age and older, and I hope it will continue to bless others.
Honorable delegates, everyone of the Union Street and the community, ladies and gentlemen. First, I would like to apologize to the delegates about my size, and I know I may seem like the incredible help to you, but I'm mostly the Superman of Pella, Iowa. And as I'm here tonight, I hear a lot of disastrous things that are happening in the community. Mainly, the most greatest disaster of all is what's happening with the Community Center. And in proof, I felt like coming here tonight wearing Superman tights does help save the Getting rid of the Community Center is wrong. It is a big part of our history, it has been a part of our forefathers, and it is my home, too. I have many Union Street friends. They're my loved family, my loved ones. I love them with all my heart, and I would pretty much go to the Black Pet to save one of them if I have to. Renovating and renewing is the best thing. Even keeping some of the stuff, some of our heritage, or re-polishing some of our heritage and things, is the best idea. And I've heard a lot of great ideas, one from my mainly grandpa and grandma of theater, Patty and Orvin Vanzany.
How old were you when you started Union Street?
I was six. My first production was The Music Man, and pretty much it was Barney the tuba player, if you've heard of The Music Man. I had many roles since, and my biggest role of all was The Wizard of Oz as the Emerald Garden in Emerald City Wizard of Oz. Renewing, and I'm sorry about this, if I keep repeating, I'm also an autistic man, so I apologize. Renewing everything and keeping some of our traditions is the greatest thing ever. You destroy that, you destroy, it's like an atomic bomb, the same atomic bomb of our Pella Dutch history, like the same fate atomically in the comic books of Superman of the planet Krypton. So I'm kind of shaking in my legs right now, because I'm going to say that.
You're doing well.
But in truth, the Community Center must be saved, and I pray that, as it's saved, more plays, more musicals, and hopefully a stage for musicals such as Young Frankenstein or A Man with a Pepper would make an appearance in there. Hopefully, maybe someday a Superman play, which I will tend to...[963.32][963.35](LAUGHTER). But please, I know this is big for me, because I'm standing here with a lot of big people, but I know you have good hearts. My heart is also big, and probably sealed with a Superman logo on it. So I just say this: Let us save the Community Center in the name of truth, justice, and the Pella Dutch way.
Just a second. Thank you, Thomas, and you do not need to apologize for anything you apologize. We appreciate your passion.
Hi, my name is Lynn Cutler. I'm a Pella resident. My parents and I moved to Pella when I was in high school, and they're still here, and we love it, and we raise our kids here. I kind of grew up in the Pella Christian world, and now my husband teaches at the Pella Community School, so I feel like I've got this straddled base in all of Pella, and it's a very interesting thing to do. But tonight, I'm talking about Union Street Players and some of the things that happened with that. I am on the Union Street Players Board, and I am one of the directors of Drama Camp. So Drama Camp is a different beast than our shows. If you haven't had a kid at Drama Camp, you probably haven't been to the Drama Camp shows. I took over, well, I kind of accepted the baton from Dave's husband Bristol a couple of years ago. Suzie Jones and I are currently running it, and there's been a lot of awesome people doing this, so I feel like this isn't, this isn't my baby. I get to do this now. So the week after our show is done, we will have 120 kids in the Community Center. We have to limit it to 120 kids, because that's how many spaces we can fit. We use the auditorium, the dining room, the green room, the meeting room, the gallery, and Crossroads is letting us use one of their rooms this year, so we have enough room for everybody. And we go through a whole week with kids from grade one through nine. Throughout the week, they learn all different things about theater, about performing. They actually help create a show, work on it, and then, we will have two packed shows on Friday night, where the parents and friends and family come and see their kids perform. And it is such a unique thing. It's exhausting for all of us, but it is amazing. And I think Drama Camp is something that teaches kids life skills that they can get other places, but here's the thing: They learn how to talk in front of people. They learn how to be part of a team, to work as a group. I grew up as an athlete, played volleyball, and I can't do that anymore. But the thing that, to me, is closest to being on that same team is to be part of a cast in a play. It is amazing how you all become one unit. So that is a huge thing that kids are working on. They're exercising their creativity. We like to show them that you don't have to only be an actor to be on stage. We need the people to work in the booth. We need the computer guys. We need the painters. We need the people who don't want to be seen on stage but would love to move the stuff on and off the stage. I feel like our kids need a lot of different places to be, to fit in. My husband and I were athletes. We fully expected our kids to be athletes. My first two children are not athletes at all. They like to play games, they have fun, but they're not athletes. Theater was a happy place for them. And a place like the Community Center lets us do these type of things in a way that some towns don't get to, because they just don't have the facilities. So that's just my encouragement to keep creating these opportunities for kids by supporting the renovation of this building.
Hi, my name is Leo Vermeer, and I've lived in Pella for 16 years. I just turned 18 about a month ago, and, sorry, I have a very severe anxiety. The Community Center growing up for me was the only place I could express myself. My father, Spencer Vermeer, has been in the community theater since before I was born. I was basically born onstage.[1268.48][1268.51](LAUGHTER). And I have found such a wonderful, wonderful family. I am very unfortunate to not have a mother in my life, but through Union Street Players, every woman in this room is my mother. And not only has the community theater aspect of the Community Center helped me, it is the art center also helped me a lot. The art center right next to our gym, I would go there every Tuesday after school. I did not have friends growing up. I still don't have a lot of friends, and I am very much an outcast in many aspects, but the art center just helped me hone my very severe ADHD into something incredible, where I can hone my skills and make something beautiful that will make other people happy as well. And I just, I know it's very unprofessional, but I love that place. I have so many memories. My first memory was from when my dad did, when my father directed Pirates of Penzance. I was about five, and I don't have a lot of memories from my childhood, but I just, I always remember sitting backstage with the cast. I was never in the shows, but I would always have that family with me, and I just hope that the Community Center will continue to help kids like me have a family and a second chance at life.
My name is Wayne Steenstra, and I live in Pella, and I've been involved in the spark preservation in Pella for 20 years. And I'll be the first to tell you that it's a lot of hard work, and it can be expensive, but it's also very rewarding. When a project is done, the two first things, you kind of forget about the hard work and the expense, and the reward is in having completed the project. And so I'm, and right now, the Community Center is entrusted to the folks sitting here. You're the city council deciding the future of this building. It's a beautiful structure, it means a lot to a lot of people. Its uses are, I wouldn't say endless, but there's a lot of good uses that building could be used for, and it could go forward for another 100 years if it's done properly. So I encourage the city council to go ahead and encourage and assist the renovation of the Community Center, and I hope that you will experience the joy that I've received in having restored some of my buildings, that you will be responsible for having made the decisions to bring this building back to life. Thank you.
I am five foot one.[1494.04][1494.07](LAUGHTER). I'm going to tell you right now that it's one of the most difficult things about being an actress, is having to write your own script. And I have been a left-brain person, having right-brain passions for a long, long time. Anyone that knows me in a workplace view would know that I care a lot, a lot, a lot about money. I love money. I think that it's what fires people, it's what makes people push and make decisions. I was once told by a very important person in my life, Mark Babcock at Central College, that people vote with their money, their pocketbooks, or their feet. I don't have a lot of the former, so I'm here to give you a little of the latter. I have been involved in theater, in community theater, when I grew up in Trenton, Missouri, in high school, at Central College for four years, where I majored in theater, and then since then and during, with Union Street Players. As I mentioned earlier, I could talk to you about the right-brain things and tug at your heartstrings, and tell you that it is so important, because it means a lot to a lot of people, and it does, it means a lot to me. But I do want to tell you that one of the things that I do think about from a left-brain standpoint is all of the things that other communities around us have, and that is a performing arts center. I don't want Knoxville to have a leg up on us. I don't want people to go to Fairfield to see a beautiful show. I don't want them to go to George Daley in Oskaloosa. I want them to be able to continue to come to Pella. I, as a senior at Central College, was faced with a couple decisions: to stay in town, to move elsewhere, to leave and come back, lots of different things. And I chose to stay, and one of the things that I weighed in my options was whether or not I'd have a place to perform. That's important to me. Given my nerves, you may not think it, but it is very important to me, and I think it's important to a lot of other people that maybe don't have, I don't even have the courage to stand up here, and I'm here. But I'm hoping that I'm speaking for a lot of other people, and I'm hoping that you see your votes as votes for people like me that it matters a lot to. And like I said, I really want Pella to be a contender. I don't want people to think, "Which town do I want to move to and bring my family to? Well, this one has three gyms, and this one has three gyms and a performing arts center. Which one do you think they're going to pick?" The one with more opportunities for all people. I can't make you cry, but hopefully I made you laugh.[1697.62][1697.65](APPLAUSE). No, you're fine. My name is Sarah Maxwell. I've been a community member for almost 10 years now.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Isn't that enough?[1720.44][1720.47](LAUGHTER).
I know better than to not give everybody a chance. Especially this girl.
My name is Spencer Vermeer. I am a lifelong member of Pella, Iowa, and a father to previous speaker Leo, and I will preface by saying Leo was born in a hospital.[1741.66][1741.69](LAUGHTER). We did not go to the Community Center to create another member of the community. But now, in all seriousness, the shirt I am wearing is from 2006. It's a play called Our Town. The first exposure that I had to that play was 1986 at Pella Hurston High School. Councilmember Mark DeYoung probably went to that show, as his daughter was in it. The next time I got involved in it was 1996. I went back to Pella Christian High to direct a brand-new class in the affair. It was not done on the Pella Christian High School stage, it was done on that Community Center stage. 10 years later, once again, with Union Street Players. It's a play dear to my heart, as it really... It is a play dear to my heart as it really encompasses a lot of what Pella is about: community. And having the stage to be able to do that in the stage of that size and that diversity makes for the opportunity to display and so many different ones that admittedly the Pella Opera House would not be equipped for. The Pella Opera House was a stage, I think, equipped for vaudeville acts coming through with two or three people, not groups of thirty like you see tonight. So I've seen proposals of new community centers that do not involve the stage. That troubles me, very much so. And I think it does many of the people in this room. How I am attached necessarily to the stage we are on, I don't know if that is irrelevant, but not having a stage at all, I think would be a crime of the community. It would be a crime to our town. So I ask that whatever proposal we have, in a short-term situation at least, includes a stage, whether that long-term we'll have a stage or not, but there needs to be some function for us to work on in the capacity that we are doing right now. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Last chance. All right. Sure appreciate all the, and we all feel blessed that we live in a community with this much passion, so that's good. Okay, Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to refer the council's attention to the big board for brief presentation on the side of this. Mayor Doris, what we're here to talk tonight about is potential options for the city's community center. It is important to note, in 2018, 19, the city initiated efforts known as the Inaugural Long Term Facilities Plan. And what the vision owes at the time is to put together a plan that addresses city facility needs over the next twenty years, which is the time period that we look at. In addition, within the context of the plan, we identified both short-term needs, midterm needs, and also long-term needs for the city as well. In terms of the city's community center, it was definitely identified as a short-term need or a short-term facility that needed retention. That's what we're really here to talk tonight about, is potential options for the community center as we strategize for what I would characterize as long-term investments for our community as well. So as we've always said, or one of the common sayings of the city council, and I didn't like this, what we want to make sure we do is measure twice, cut once on it. So what you're going to see tonight is general discussions about potential options, and what we're really interested in is starting the discussion on actual feedback and narrowing down those options as well. So with that, again, I believe we've pretty well covered all the items. Mandy, on the first slide up there, let's go ahead. Some of this has already been stated early at the evening, we won't bother to rehash this. It is important to note, I believe, that the facility was placed in the National Register of Historical Places in 2020 as well. So, Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, as far as the engineering assessments, we heard a couple of comments tonight about the engineering assessment sponsored by the Friends of the Community Center and the Schummer Assessment. What we actually hired as part of the Long Term Facilities Plan was George Elliott Henderson on this, commonly referred to as SEH. And when they initially looked at the community center, one of the items they looked at, and the principal item that they did look at at the time, is they did a high-level assessment of the community center. And what this really, this option is, is important to note, it's a high-level assessment. It basically involves, if you looked at the frame of the building and replaced everything inside the building on it, so everything would be brought in, everything would be replaced. The estimated cost on that was roughly $10.3 million as well. In addition, the plan did also involve accessibility enhancements as well that was included within the $10.3 million plan. Now, let's go ahead and talk about the second assessment that we did, actually in December of 2020. One of the questions that we have often received at the community center is, we've had high-level assessment performed on the building. What we were looking for was a more narrowed, detailed scope on items that were major items that would need to be in attention and likely to be replaced in the next twenty years. That assessment revealed, we did walkthroughs, numerous walkthroughs on the item, the cost of addressing the major items that would be is roughly $4.3 million. So if you want to look at the two plans that have been performed by SEH on it, the first item was a high-level assessment involving replacing everything in the building, again. The second item was a much more thorough assessment on the items that would likely need to be replaced. But I want to stress the difference between these two items. When we look at the $4.3 million option, it is important to note, as we look at the structure of the building itself currently, if you were to walk in the facility, there is some accessibility issues. A lot of those accessibility issues in the structure of the building would remain in place with the $4.3 million option as well. So it would be addressing the major items that would need to be replaced, but also utilizing components that are in relatively good shape on the assessment as well. Mandy, let's go ahead and briefly talk about the Schummer Assessment that was sponsored by the Friends of the Community Center as well. If you want to look at this based off staff's review on it as well, we believe this was another relatively high-level assessment. It did involve really a game plan as far as accessibility options for the community center. Also involved the addition of a wing in addition to the community center. We have a schematic design that was submitted as a part of the proposal as well. It is important to note that the new wing addition would provide approximately 9,400 square feet of additional facility space. So when you look at your options on the matter, and we look at the first assessment that the city performed on it, which is basically replace everything inside the building, there would also be some accessibility enhancements on, on that. That is probably the mid-range on, on options. When we look at the second assessment, which is basically replace the major components in the building that would need retention and anything that was viable that could last would not be replaced at that time. As far as the accessibility options and enhancements that would be on the low wing, this would be the upper level because it would actually add an additional wing to the facility which would increase accessibility to the facility. In addition, I believe it was mentioned earlier by Ms. Martin as well, that if the gym would be fully accessible as well, with this option is being proposed by the Friends on that. Now, as far as the overall cost of this, we believe by the time you add in the engineering on this as well, it's probably closer to right around $15 million is what we're looking at with that. So, Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, as part of the terms, the context, when we talk about our ultimate options tonight, one of the options that we did look at when we were looking at the Long Term Facilities Plan is SEH spent a considerable amount of time talking to users of the community center and also key stakeholders in the community center. And one, the reason why that was important is we wanted to get a handle on what the actual uses of the community center were and what the public desired as far as needs of the community as well. And what came out of the assessment, which we used as part of our Long Term Facility Assessment, was when we looked at options, and we've always thought it would be wise, when you look at investments for the community in the future, to take a look at what would be the option or what would be the estimated cost if we did build a new community center. So with that, SEH, again, they spent a lot of time on this matter and they also met with people, the general public, as well on this and even really the key stakeholders when you're looking at it. But ultimately what they came up with is for our community, our size, when you look at a new community center, they came up with a facility roughly right around 47,000 square feet. Based on the feedback that they got from the key stakeholders on, on the matter and users of the facility, there was a demand, they felt, for two additional gymnasiums in our community, and these would be full-size gymnasiums as well. In addition, there was also noted demand for the city's art programs, as well as additional meeting rooms for the general public. In addition, we also looked from city needs when we were looking at putting together the community center or the Long Term Facilities Plan, there were thoughts on this, and this ties actually to this building. And when we look at our public safety department and our police department, the long-term, long-term needs of the police department, the thought was is that if we had new council chambers that could also serve as home for city boards as well, we would be able to vacate this room and actually conduct public meetings in a new community center as well. In addition, what was also proposed would be new kitchen and dining facilities as well. Now, one of the items I want to make sure I cover on this, because this is, we want to make very clear, when we looked at it and we looked at a new community center initially, there were thoughts that the community needed a large meeting room at the time. Since that time, there's been some private industry enhancements as far as large meeting rooms as well. But the overall thought was that if you're going to build a new community center, you'd want to make sure you'd have a large meeting room for large public meetings on that as well, could be beneficial to the community as well. And the thoughts were, at the modern community center, this large meeting room could serve also as a potential option for to accommodate theatrical performances. While we realized that was just for discussion purposes at the time, subsequently, we did go back to SEH and ask, if we were to look at the community center in the shell that is being proposed with the new facility, if we were to add an auditorium that is roughly the size of the same auditorium at the Public Community Center, what would be the additional cost of that auditorium? The existing auditorium at the Public Community Center is roughly 5,000 square feet on it. Adding roughly a 5,000-foot addition to this new structure would add somewhere between a million to $2 million in cost on the building. So when we look at the new community center for discussion purposes, back in 2019, when SEH looked at for initial report, involved a large meeting room that could also serve and accommodate theatrical performances. If we wanted to keep the meeting room and add on an additional auditorium for theatrical performances, that would be an additional $1 to $2 million. And we just rounded it off for discussion purposes tonight, as if we did include the auditorium, it would be roughly $17 million. And the facility would be roughly right around 52,000 square feet of space on it.
When was this?
This was actually in 2019, and this is what got as far as the new community center on it. So the, the information that we received at the time was rather timely as we still make decisions on the matter on this. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as we talk about potential partnerships with the Friends of the Community Center, and as mentioned earlier this evening, this was one of the maps that they were kind enough to share with the city. But I think it points out one of the options and one of the strengths and of existing city community centers, the location of the Public Community Center. When you look at this map and you also look at its proximity to Central Park, the Pella Library, the Central College campus, as well as West Market Park in the city's downtown, it is a very good location. This map exhibits that as well. And that's one of the key premises of the partnership that's being proposed this evening with the Friends of the Community Center on that. So it's an important item to keep in mind as we discuss options for, for the Public Community Center. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the partnership, it's staff's understanding whether it's been proposed by the Friends of the Community Center. So this would be a complete renovation of the existing facility. It would also add a new wing addition, which is approximately 9,400 square feet onto the building. The estimated cost of this would be roughly $15 million. Now, based off the information that we did receive from the Friends of the Pella Community Center, that would leave the city's share with approximately $11 million on this. So $4 million by the Friends, $11 million for the city of Pella on this as well. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. And briefly, we have listed up on the big board on this, and for discussion purposes, we've done some preliminary financial estimates on this. Now, I want to state perfectly clear, are there options for the city to lower these amounts? The answer is yes, but for discussion purposes, if we look at projects on a standalone basis and we were to put up and look at these options, assuming the city were to just seek a general obligation referendum on each one of these options, this is roughly the impact that we would be looking at, the typical home in Pella would be looking at as far as additional property taxes, just for the renovation cost on this as well. So option number one, we have up there, would be the existing service levels, maintaining the existing service levels, addressing the major items that need to be replaced in the building, roughly $4.3 to $4.5 million. When we look at the estimated property tax increase that would be needed to service the debt service level on that option, it would be about $49 per year for the typical home in the city of Pella. Option number two, which is the partnership with Friends of the Pella Community Center on this, the city's estimated share would be $11 million. Estimated increase in our property tax increase on a $200,000 home would be about $120 per year. And option number three, which would be to build a new facility, roughly 52,000, 52,000 square feet on that, option number three would be right around $186 per year. Once again, in discussion purposes, are there other additional revenues potentially of the community as well that could help support the project? The answer is yes, and that's definitely a council decision on the matter. But to be perfectly clear, these were, the city were issued a 20-year bond on the matter and undertaking each one of the options. This would be roughly the impact of a typical property owner if we chose to do so on it as well. It is important to note, if we did issue a straight general obligation bond, it would take a significant amount of community support on the matter because we would have to have a referendum to finance the city's share. So that was some preliminary financial information. Before we start talking about options, are there any questions on the three options that have been reviewed previously, or in regards to the Public Community Center, or the impact on property taxes for the city as well?
The option one, did not enhance accessibility at all?
No, and actually Brian Burge from Lucas Casey are here from SEH, and I'd like to defer that just to make sure we're clear on that. But the question was, option number one, and it's, and looking at that, did not, just to make sure we're correct on that, that did not enhance any accessibility to the facility?
Option one does provide some minimal enhancements to accessibility such as upgrades to the elevator and providing that lift to the gym. So some minor upgrades to try and bring any compliance with current.
Anyone else have questions?
I just had a question. Option two is going to add like 9,400 square feet. What is the existing, what considers usable square feet on that, that building when, and then compared to the option three, which would be, like I think you said, 52,000 square feet?
Yeah. I could ask Brian to come back up to the podium. You may want to stay here. Brian, the question was, the existing square footage of the Public Community Center, also the usable square footage of the Public Community Center compared to the 52,000 square foot new facility, what would be some of the differences?
Sure. So the existing community center is around 40,000 square feet. If you take out the theater and the gym, you have roughly 20,000 square feet left for other activities or other functions. So it's roughly half of it, if you take out the theater and the gym, you see a portion of it.
Now, as far as the new facility and the 52,000 square foot facility, how does that relate to the existing facility?
Well, obviously, there's quite a bit of difference between a new facility and what you have today. There would be quite a bit more opportunity for program spaces in the new facility. You really have the ability to maximize what you're building in all the facility and really make sure that you get the efficiency you're looking for. So the vast majority of it would become usable program space to support the function of the community center.
So that includes the two gyms, or are you taking those out?
Well, it depends, yes. There are two gyms planned for that space in the proposal that we put forward. So obviously, you'd have to back those out. Those gyms, I believe, were around 5,000 square feet each. So you'd have to back that out to kind of be more of an apple stat this comparison.
I have a small question. You said two additional gyms, so there'd be three total gyms in the new or option three? Or just two? Two additional or two total?
There is, I believe for option three, that the building new community center included two gyms.
It included two gyms, and we, I believe we had kind of run on an option to someday build an additional third gym, but then there would be two gyms was, was the original plan included in the facility.
And then my other question would be about, with option three, does the number price tag include bulldozing the original gym or the original building, and then therefore building on top of that, or building in a new area?
Well, if we could just hold on, I think you're getting a little bit ahead. Those are very good questions. We'll make sure we address them in our final rundown on options as well. So as far as the cost on this, this would be just strictly the cost answer that directly on the new community center, but we'll hold off and we'll make sure we address those as well.
You have a question?
I was wondering about the cost you would estimate for an auditorium. It seems low to me, a performance auditorium. One to two million dollars?
Yes, that was, that cost, and there may have been some confusion, that was a cost for a typical type meeting room, that wasn't for a performing arts theater type facility.
So it wouldn't, it wouldn't be equivalent to what we have in the existing?
That cost would not be equivalent to what you have today, is correct.
What would be the estimate of something equivalent, Brian?
Probably closer to four to five million dollars. It'd be something equivalent.
So equivalent on, on that item, the four to five million dollars, so it'd be roughly about a 19 and a half to 20 million dollar facility for something that would be equivalent with an equivalent theater.
Yes, and it's also--
Would it have an equivalent stage?
Yes, I mean, in theory, these are, these are details that obviously we'd have to work through. So, you know, we're kind of while parking some, some high-level things here, but that's, that would--
But that's important.
Be the intent, yes.
And I think what's also important too, Brian, in the analysis, if I understood it correctly, the original analysis had a multipurpose meeting room that could also accommodate large meeting rooms and could be used for theatrical performances, potentially on it as well. And that would be the item. As far as discussion, those types of details, when you look at a new facility, you'd have to weigh out on how large of the meeting room that you still needed to be for-- for a multipurpose room if you choose to put on an auditorium as well.
Just for clarification, the way I understood it, the new community center does not include a stage. Right?
As proposed here, it does not.
Yeah, as proposed here, does not include a stage. There was an extra $5,000 to expand the room, but there's no stage in that.
No permanent stage.
Yeah, just so we understand that, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead. Lucas Casey, also with SEH, colleague of Brian here. I want to offer, I think, a little framing because we're getting right into questions here. All of what SEH was engaged to do on behalf of the city was really provide conceptual direction so that, you know, the council and the community could evaluate different options going forward and contrast those options. And like, we're also from the Friends of the Community Center. We have certainly stopped short at this point of designing a project. And I want to make that clear with everybody. So when the questions come up that, is this in, is this out? These are lines on paper with high-level dollar estimates at this point. There were extensive interviews about programming and needs in the community. But I just wanted to offer that sort of, you know, back to the beginning of where we started in this process and where I'm sure the consultant with the Friends of the Community Center has been coming at this from, is that these are broad strokes to guide decision-making and sort of policymaking on the direction. You know, that is, I think, the preference of the council then to work with staff and work with consultants to say, we want to move in this direction. And now from their plans, usually certainly get refined further development. So I just wanted to offer that before perhaps, and maybe cut off some questions of, is this in option two, is this not in option two? They're pretty broad strokes, so.
All right, well, let's move on, finish the presentation, and then if there's more questions, we will. Because some of them may get answered.
All righty. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. So when looking at, and I'm going to preface this comment to get the discussion started on matters, what we'd like to solicit feedback on is council's feedback on each one of the options that we want, we're going to cover up here on the big board. Option number one would be the, I would say, the replace, the items that need actually be replaced, maintain existing services at the community center. And also this option, just to be very clear, based on the analysis, it would still have a majority of the accessibility issues. There'd be minor amount of accessibility issues for that. That's roughly a $4.3 to $4.5 million option. That's option number one. Option number two, let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Option number two is to enter into partnership with the Friends of the Community Center. And just so, we want to be very clear, this would be with right now preliminary planning. And once again, the assessments have been done today. It's very important, they're conceptual in nature, they're high-level estimates on this. The initial estimate of cost we have is $15 million. The city's share would be roughly $11 million on that. Included in this option would be working out with the partnership agreement with Friends of the Community Center. And then you'd have to address as far as the pledges, when those would be paid to the city. And it's something that's not uncommon for major projects that we've done in private industry, in private parties before. We work in fields of our future in building the Pellet Sports Park. So this would be nothing new to the city of Pellet. We envision an agreement that would be similar to this. But those types of details, we have not had conversations with the Friends on it. So this is just conceptual in nature where we've talked about ballpark at financial allocations for the option number two. Option number three for this is going to be very, very general. And what we're saying could be building a community center. It could be doing something else with the community center. It could be doing transitioning uses to any other option. The reason why I think it's very important to look at all the city's options is if you look at the nature of long-term facility planning, what we're doing as a community, this is a significant investment for the community. And coming to and making decisions, it's very important to consider all your options on the matter. And in looking at option number three, for discussion purposes, we want to make sure we at least touch base on that. We get feedback on council. And if there is something additional that we have not covered today or looked at today, we want to make sure that we do due diligence on it as well. So that's the nature of option number three. There isn't a definite proposal, but if this could be any other item that council may have had considerations or thoughts of that we haven't previously reviewed or covered, or could be an existing item, such as building the new community center as well. So with that, Mr. Mayor, just to briefly cover the options, one, two, and three. Some of the details, such as option number three, if we were to do something else with the building, does any of these options include the cost of it? Because of the nature of it, the answer is no. We have not got to that level of detail yet. For looking at options, those would have to be considered on it. Similar with building a new community center. There's a lot of logistical details with each one of these options, to be honest, that we have not discussed as a council and made decisions on it as well on it. So please keep in that in mind, even though we've been working on this for some time, estimates to date that we really had to date are high-level estimates. And a lot of details would still need to be worked out. So again, tonight's discussions tended to get us started and to touch on the options. And what we're here to do, Mr. Mayor, is solicit feedback of the mayor and council on each one of the options listed up on the big board. So with that, Mr. Mayor, we'd be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor and council may have on this item.
Okay, thanks, Mike. So, council, I'm anxious to hear from you. Obviously, I think in all the discussion tonight, I think there was talk about original discussion on this started in 2013, which is a long time ago. So obviously, I don't, we do have a couple of members of the council that were here in 2013. So why this issue hasn't been addressed sooner, I don't know. The reasons for that, but we're faced with it now because we need to make a decision and move on so that we can quit talking about it, essentially, my feeling. And so hearing what we've heard tonight, again, I'm anxious to hear council's thoughts. We need to give some direct, try to discern a direction that we want to point this ship towards because there's a lot of work to do, and no matter whatever we decide, there's a lot of work to do before we can move on from this.
I'll jump in, and I think option one's a $4 million band-aid.
I agree. That is very short-term. I think we'd be lucky to get 20 years. On option three, I'll just do a quick math, and this will be to the architects. But coming up at 52,000 square feet for 17 mil, that's about $330-some dollars per square foot. Is that realistic in today's, today's world?
You're thinking it's low?
Oh, yes.
I'm not building any of that.
I guess my comment to that would be that, you know, it's in the ballpark, but also keep in mind that was two years ago. And we do have some unusual times today if you were to build.
I concur, and I was going to offer that to you, but you spoke well. What would you say, and today, I'm assuming that you are up to current cost? What do you, and I'm in construction, I have a pretty good idea of what it costs. What do you say is a current cost for, I'm not talking a mediocre building. I'm talking a nice building, something that would enhance our community. What do you think is a-
Well, of course, depending on the features you put into it, obviously, that has a big part of it. But you could easily on a community center be in that $350 to $400 range per square foot cost. And again, there's a lot of variables that can lead to that. So you could drive that number up and you could drive that number down.
Thank you.
Well, I guess I'll jump in. My memory of the community center stage is only at candidate's forums. So it's not nearly as pleasant as yours is out there under those bright lights. And then, secondly, I'm sure all the other council members too got a lot of emails, a lot of good feedback. There seemed to be a sense, and I would almost call it a misconception, that to eliminate things at the community center, from what I read with the programs that are there. And I, speaking for me personally, that wasn't my idea at all. That the programs and the benefits that the community center has had in the past of that location, I personally want to continue some way, somehow, and possibly even in a bigger, in a better fashion. So I'm just going to read one email that I received that really struck me. And he said, he or she said, "Good morning. I'm writing to voice support for renovating the current community center building. The building is a truly prime location for arts organizations to be able to fully maximize their impact on our community." And then, secondly, this is what struck me the most. "I know I am not completely informed on the issue, but is there a better solution that I am not aware of that will allow for all the offerings the current space has, especially the space needed for the performing arts?" And that's why I kind of lean towards option three. I like option two and the fact we've got a game plan ready to go. And if we go with option three, we're going to have to kick the can down the road a little bit more to do another study and another proposal on a brand-new one. But I think we need to compare those two and to see, okay, what truly is going to be the better the cost, renovating under option two or brand-new from option three? And looking what the facility could house otherwise. I think those of you out there that know me, you know that I enjoy history. I enjoy the sense of community. I'm related to four of the speakers that were up there today, so that means a lot to me. But also, all things come to an end at some point. And when does a new community center be the new Mollenkraut that somebody mentioned that we hope is going to be there 100 years from now? So I would like to see an option three where a brand-new community center gets built. We compare it to option two and then decide which is the best way to go.
I think we have to really weigh two things here, guys. And I'm going to be right upfront. I think option two is the right one for us. As Mark said, the 4.5, option one, is a band-aid. Option two, if you look at, or option three, compared to option two, that building, you're going to get a steel building that is not going to be around for 100 years. I've been, I've worked in that building. That building will be standing 100 years from now, especially if we do due diligence. Now, the problem that I see that has is accessibility and to get from the school mind to a community center service. And if that addition, I absolutely love what they did with that addition because it gets rid of the you walking all the way around. It makes it all accessible. The bathrooms are accessible. It solves so many issues. That building, if we do option two, will be in the community service for the next 50 to 100 years. I really feel that. It will stand longer than any new metal building that we put up. Secondly, I think us as council, and we're looking at money. Actually, there's three things out there. Secondly, I think we need to take into consideration the passion of the constituents of our community. I think we've seen it here tonight. I think we've all seen emails. I've been dealing with it for eight years now, and there's a lot of passion. I think that anything that is worthwhile takes time to ripen, and that's probably why we have not, eight years ago, addressed this. But I think the time is right. One other, one other thing I would like to say. We have been called to provide to the community lifestyle-enhancing amenities. And I would think that we would be very hard-pressed for the, for our bang for the buck in that community center. For the amount of dollars, because right now, we're at 11 million. I doubt if it takes that much. You see the passion of the community. They, I mean, so I think we would be very hard-pressed to find any facility that has been discussed anywhere near the bang for the buck that we would get for our money put into that building. My-
So I have a, have a couple of questions. Well, I have one question for SEH. Were you proposing a pre-engineered steel building?
No, absolutely not.
Okay. It was masonry?
I mean, it may be steel frame construction, but it was not in any way intended to pre-engineer steel.
Okay, thank you.
No, there's a difference there between pre-engineered, because that has a steel siding on it.
Sure, yep. Okay, so, so something that maybe I have a little bit of, I have the privilege of actually, it's not my skill set, it's my wife's skill set, but of having been on the stage with many of you. I have, as Lynn said, my wife started, did she start drama camp? She started drama camp, okay. In its form that it is right now. And did that for a dozen years or whatever it was. So I have a lot of, I'd say, maybe inside intel. I've been there. I've been on the stage. I've been involved with USP, and I've loved my experience. Some things that, and I've even, I even built, I even built a set for one place. Once Upon a Matric, I built a set that I would do. And so a few things that I know, let me take one step back. So what I heard is our community theater is valuable. Our stage is valuable. We want a place that we can perform and that we can have our community together as a family. I heard family a lot of times. I heard about community services, that our community services are valuable, that our art center is valuable. That what would we do without our community center so that we could do all of these activities? And I am, I am wholeheartedly on board with all of those sentiments. And I'm also wholeheartedly against a, like a multipurpose space. Wholeheartedly against that, that doesn't, that doesn't do an auditorium or a theater justice. Now, all that being said, all of the things that I just said that are valuable and that are important to what basically everybody said can be accomplished with option three, save two, the location potentially and the heritage. So if I'm looking at this decision from any number of angles, I'm going to look at it two different, two different ways. I'm going to look at it, one, what makes the most sense? Can we accomplish the goals that were stated? I took more notes than I've ever taken at a council meeting. I wrote everybody's name down and I made notes from everybody's statement. Can we accomplish the goals that were stated? Stage, classes, meeting space, accessibility, user-friendly, an enduring place? Can we accomplish those with option three? And basically multiply our efforts? So some of the work on option two is we have to, we have to make do with an old building. And that's, that's part of an older building. That's, that's okay. But some of the money that we're spending would be making do. So it's an accessibility thing where if we started from scratch from new, those come with the territory. So my, the thing that I like is I would, I would be all on board with option three, a new community center that includes a great auditorium. I believe you said, I don't want to have to think that Knoxville or Fairfield or Scholosa, Newton has a leg up on us. And, correct me if I'm wrong, I've been, I've been to George Daley, I've been to Knoxville. Those theaters are, they're nicer, newer, bigger, et cetera. I'd love to have an auditorium that equals or betters those options as well. And the space that we have currently doesn't allow that. And the space that we have currently doesn't allow that. Now, as somebody also who has built a set, I know that the backstage and the side wings, there's almost, almost not enough space. No, there's not enough space. Would you guys agree with me?
Yes.
Okay, okay. There's no getting around that. Without taking out the hallways, without doing a whole lot of work that would change the building altogether, there's no getting around the stage being too small, the side wings being too small, and backstage being too small. So there's a lot of things that I'm like, are we trying to fit a square peg into a round hole here if we're doing option two? And if it simply comes down to, we wanna preserve a historic building, let's call it that. Let's not say it's gonna be a better option. Let's say we wanna preserve, and if that's the option that we decide, we wanna preserve a historic building and make it work. If that's what we decide, that's what we decide. It's fine. But let's not say, my opinion, my opinion, let's not say that it's the best option to accomplish all the goals that I just heard about, because I believe that all of the things besides location and heritage could be accomplished better and have more options with a new building. There we go. Long statement.
Thanks, Dave. Anyone else?
To follow up on Dave, I have concerns, even if the building, and I'm all in favor of preserving the building, but I have concerns whether there would be adequate space even after renovation for the art programs. I don't know how many people have been down there and that trained or active in art center, but there's room for improvement there. We're not serving the kids or the community or the adults out of that, that's true.
Yes, I fully agree with that. I was gonna say, I too have spent some time in the community center. In 2003, where Spencer, I also performed in our town. I was the steamed paper boy, so I think that's my level of paint skill. I did spend more time in the arts program, though, that's where I was a little bit better. So, there you go, I'm there. I think I heard a lot about, what about the next 100 years? And when I think about the next 100 years and I think about what I dream for our community in terms of growth, in terms of development, I want a facility that won't be limited in space and size for our arts programs. Theater, absolutely inclusion, but also for our traditional, our studio arts, our fine arts, our music arts. I even think our kitchens, our dining, our, all of those, the skills that are so important to thriving community that was discussed tonight. So as I think about the next 100 years, I can't comfortably say option two is absolutely the answer. I think, I think we have to pursue, at least explore, an option three and what that could potentially look like.
Have faith. Have faith, we're going, that option three can be done. Faith is like the ultimate power in this community. It's helped me get through a lot of things whenever my autism attacks me with dark thoughts in my head. And there's also times where, when I wanna perform a show, I'm hoping that some of that money, since I worked with Lynn Brandon-Worst at the community center for a facility for disabled people like me, I was hoping the money could go to that to revolve a new, to make a new place for people like me. So basically, with option three of renewing everything, have faith, for us kids who've never went through. We are a community of faith. We can get it done if we give it a chance.
Okay, Lynn, you were, you made a statement.
Yes. So unusual for me to be the last one to speak, so. I'm a little puzzled. We've spent an enormous amount of time and money and chip financing and a lot of things to get the core of this community going. One only needs to look at the South Main project to see, that's about location, location, location. Look at the new grocery store that's coming in. It's not going in in the parameters of our community, it's going into the heart of our community. And there's a reason, because we're looking at a revitalization of the center of our community. And a community center, and I'm not going to bore you with the history, but I did look it up, it's always located in the center of the community. And it's located there for a reason. It's to be accessible and available to everyone. If we put something on the parameters, we're gonna knock out a large portion of our community. I will never forget the speech I gave at the manor when we were discussing this. Tony Bachcombe was with me that day. And this lady was speaking to us about keeping the community center in the middle of the community because she wheelchair-bound and she can make it from her motorized wheelchair. And if she took her to the parameters, oh yes, they would drop her off, but she would be hard-pressed to get home. So I'm puzzled because we have done so many percolating strides towards this renaissance of our core, and now we're talking about taking the most important building that will reach the highest population despite anyone's disabilities or socioeconomic background, and we're thinking about moving it. We're thinking about moving it, and that, I find that alarming. I really do, because I'm thinking, well then, what was all this other stuff about? What was South Main about? What is the Gateway Market about? What is the Oskaloosa supporter project about? Just a question. That's why I fully support option two. I do. I think if we don't take this and have this be the, this is the beacon or the catalyst or the cherry on top of the cake for everything we've been doing with all these other core projects in our communities. The other options, the other buildings will go to our extremities, but this is the location, the location, the location that I believe this art center needs.
I think that that would, it would be a travesty, Dave you mentioned, and I don't disagree with you that, you know, option three, we need to look at something on that order also. But we kind of almost minimize the historical and the location. How can we not consider those two? I'm ready to just throw, I'm just, plus, it's not, I mean, we're talking a lot of bucks there. And this is bang for buck, I mean, where else you get people that are coming in with five million of grassroots people, five million dollars, and they're willing to put in and who knows what more, and, well, no, we're gonna go outside of town. I've had similar things with people very concerned about a community center almost to the edge of the outskirts of town. I just don't, I don't understand. I'm really, I really don't understand. I think we're trying to get a ball rolling, and so we're just forgetting any of the background, and let's go for that ball. That ball can still happen. And you guys know what I'm talking about. But let us not drop our location and our heritage. Galvin, I know you're a history bum, but let's not drop our heritage and our location. What a travesty that will be.
So that leads to the question of what needs to happen with that building and what could be done elsewhere?
What do you mean?
Well, I don't think there's space in that building unless I'm understanding the concept...
There's 49,000 square feet with a proposed 9,000 addition. The new one they're talking about is 52, 3,000 square feet, not that...
But when they speak of opening it up and taking out whatever isn't structural and so forth, I can't quite wrap my head around what that will look like, how much of that would really be usable space.
Some of that bang for your buck that you're talking about, Bruce, is maybe there's a value like in per square foot, but is it dollars per dollars, per square foot cost? But is it, is the square footage that we're getting, is it as usable per square foot, if you follow what I'm saying? Like, make it do with going down into the art center or, you know, we've got a lot of space in stairways. There's, you know, there's a lot of square footage that's not great space that while it's considered, you know, part of the square footage of the building, is it, is it great usage? No?
I think they've talked, if you look at the plan, I think they've talked about taking and getting rid of one stairwell. Is there any reason that one of those hallways you talked about, you need to expand the stage? There's hallways on both sides. There's no reason you couldn't expand that stage on one side. I mean, all these things are options. It's, and then we are going to encounter things and we're gonna have to work through it. But I still go back to bang for the buck with a $5,000 grassroots in there? We need to spend $10,000 and we got a 50,000 square foot facility that will go on for a long time? I don't get it. We can do whatever else, I'm fine with, but to just abandon that for the money it would take, in my mind, would be a travesty.
We don't know if a brand-new one would cost 25 million and you get 15 million in donations, too.
It probably could.
You just don't know that until those options are laid out.
But there's two things missing there, Galvin.
What he said.
It's the history and the location. And I think we need to place an emphasis on that because those are two things that you can't pull away. The location is there, and the history is there. You've seen the passion.
Right, but I've also talked to folks that don't have the passion that say, why are you putting money into an old building? And those folks don't come to a meeting like this, you know, so.
This is the same person that is historically involved in Oskaloosa?
Could be. You know, I'll never forget when I was campaigning, I met two older gentlemen, both had been in the business world. One of them was firmly said, we gotta do everything we can to save it, and one said, you can't start the bulldozers fast enough. You know, very intelligent folks, but there's different philosophies.
There is different opinion outside.
So I think that, that's why I'd like to compare, I could still easily go with option two if the option three, we looked at and we all shook our heads, this just isn't gonna work. Option two is not a bad option. It's not, I think Mark mentioned some good limiting things that we'd have to deal with on the art side, which I think we don't do quite enough in our community and have some, we looked at some major spaces I talked about, some broadening of that. So, but I think we can't make a good decision until we see both. That's where I'm really, really landing on that. And I would have, I think we could be proud of option two if whatever comes up in option three is just too expensive, that the location doesn't look good. I don't see option two as a drop-dead option at all.
May I remind everybody that when they come to the theater to go to our shows, they also come and they shop downtown, they also dine there because the restaurants and the shops are all near proximity. I just, I just want you to think of that, too. It's important to all our people.
Any other comments, council?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Mark.
Something that I think comes into the mix, fully appreciate location. I don't know exactly what you're talking about, but given that location and what happens in that building, who's our core customer? Is it, is it the senior citizens? I mean, leaving the theater aside, because that is a, you know, your production goes for a few nights and then that's over with for a number of months, but given the other functions in that building, crossroads, whatever, who is our customer? Who should be using that location?
Okay, anything else? All right, we're gonna move on.
Can I share?
No. We have had our public input. I gave everybody plenty of time to talk. We've got to move on at some point. We'll move it on to finish our meeting. Just remember that any proposal that comes before the council, you will again have adequate input. It's not, we are not making any decision tonight, you have to understand that. This is strictly a work session to talk about options. When we come, if and when the council comes back with a proposal that we will actually vote on, then there will be plenty of time again for more public input, okay? So I don't wanna cut anybody off, but we gotta, I gotta cut you off. Okay, so we're moving on. Ordinance number 95 entitled an ordinance amending municipal telecommunications utility rates in the city of Pella, Iowa, first reading. Mike, please explain.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to. And once again, I'd like to direct the council's attention to the day of ordinance tonight. So ordinance change relates to the initial and also the retail offerings for Pella Fiber concerning internet services.
May want to wait a second.
Yeah, wouldn't want to blind anyone if I ladies are here.
We do want to thank you for the fiber optics, Dave.
I just couldn't agree with the situation.
Option two is now, it's a, and we're all, yeah, it's overall for marriage.
All right. Mike, please explain.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Tonight's ordinance, what we have is actually used in preparation for the retail service offer named Pella Fiber. And specifically, what we're looking to do is just remove the charge for managed Wi-Fi. I hear you, echo. And it's roughly currently listed in the current ordinance, it's $10 per month, and what we're simply proposing to do is include that in our base fee. So when people sign up for Pella Fiber, managed Wi-Fi will be a part of the base fee and part of the base service for Pella Fiber. Managed Wi-Fi provides several benefits for customers. It's gonna provide additional parental controls, also providing scans, and internet usage monitoring for the customers as well. In addition, one of the benefits that we have for it is it's gonna allow us to provide enhanced customer service relations, services as well to our customers as well. So there's a lot of benefits to managed Wi-Fi. What we're simply proposing to do is to remove this from the base service. We were planning on charging $10 additional for this. This would be a part of the base fee and benefit to our customers and part of Pella Fiber. And so with that, Mr. Mayor, we'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have on this item. As an important note in the element of time in preparing to prepare retail operations for Pella Fiber, we would also ask for a waiver in the second and third readings on this ordinance tonight. So with that, Mr. Mayor, we'd be more than happy to answer any questions the mayor and council may have on this item.
Can I get a motion for approval? Just keep out DeYoung, any discussion?
Can't imagine people objecting to food.
Yeah, we didn't have any people with this on the agenda talking about. Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed, no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Skeba?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Brandon-Worst?
Yes.
DeAnstruck?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Mayor, I move we set aside the second, third reading and place on final.
Just keep out Brandon-Worst, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed, no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Skeba?
Yes.
Brandon-Worst?
Yes.
DeAnstruck?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Spore?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Mayor, I move we give it for adoption.
Motion for approval, adoption of the ordinance by Skeba, support. DeYoung, discussion?
I'm just wondering, Bruce is always trying to push, push these things forward, I love it.
This one needs to be... Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed, no. Mandy, please call the roll. Mandy, please call the roll.
Skeba?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Brandon Horst?
Yes.
Dan Struck?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
For?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Dan Struck?
Yes.
Skeba?
Yes.
Brandon Horst?
Yes.
Dan Struck?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
For?
Yes.
Motion passed. Don't know if I dare ask this question or not, but is there any council member that has any other item you want to bring before us this evening? All right. I have moved the public portion to the start of our meeting, so I will entertain a motion